Good evening, 7:00 AM, we have a forum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Mark Reed.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Reed from Heritage Survey, he's with me tonight is Bill Cannon. We have a, we'd like to meet with the board as a pre-permitting step for a project that is going to be constructed on the last lot on Venture Way.
Well, there's one left? I thought they were all done.
Yeah, this last one.
Oh, okay.
The last one.
I thought they were all taken at first.
Yeah, right. Okay, so this is a schematic plan that we produced. The building in itself, the building in itself is going to be constructed in phases. So the first part of the building is 39,000 square feet. And then the second part of the kind of an L-shaped building is 4,430 square feet. So that, the client is Desco Medical. They service medical equipment. And I have a little narrative that was prepared by them to get to the board. So that, Desco is only going to have four full-time employees at this facility. The rest of the people work out in the field. They go into medical facilities, hospitals, doctor's office and so forth. And the building for, you know, use intensity-wise is very low-key. And so, as far as the front portion of the building, we're still retaining.
So is it going to be kind of a warehouse? You've got four employees with a building this?
Yeah, it's going to be office space and they, you know, they hope to be able to grow.
So is this whole building will be Desco?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the first phase of the 39, right?
The architectural arrangement of the building is such that Desco is going to lease out portions of this building to other tenants as well. So it won't just be them that is coming into this building in here. But there'll be, there's room for other tenants as well. So in the first phase of the building, which is the front portion, they will occupy about half of it and then lease out the other half to another potential tenant. And then the second phase, which is the wing going back, this will be divided into two tenants at the most. You know, if such that there's a tenant that needs more square footage, that can be arranged with Desco, modified according to their needs. But all the parking and everything else will meet the requirements for, you know, the building size.
Just be aware that because you're in the aquifer, that any tenant would have to be, you have to let us know what tenant is going to be and what they do.
Correct.
Yeah, it's all, it's all office space though per se.
And I'm not saying it's a problem, just as a matter of the bylaw, that's what you've got to do.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, we have not seen an issue with anybody that's done that.
Right, okay. So this piece is a 13-acre piece. What's going to be developed is about two acres out of the 13. The rest of it's going to be remain as current condition, open space. There's a couple, there's detention basins, three different detention basins that were constructed on this piece of property and associated with Venture Way as part of the original master plan that was done.
Exactly where is it?
So it's, you've got an overall plan. Yeah, I've got an overall plan. So this is right next to the pump station.
Okay.
All right, so American River is on the inside of it. The Pearson.
And he has the educational.
Educational building is over here. Then UMass also has another building on that side.
Which one is just sold?
Uh, over here.
Any of the, sold to UMass?
Yes, it was sold to UMass or to the Commonwealth, to UMass for their library.
That becomes a non-tax thing for us alone?
I would guess so, yes. Yeah, there's two buildings on that piece. So you're facing the property, the left-hand building, UMass has bought. The right hand is still owned by Pearson on that piece of property. So there are wetlands on the property. The wetland boundaries have been confirmed by the Conservation Commission and we are preparing a notice of intent to be filed with them too.
Timeline?
Timeline, we'd like to file the application for your first meeting in February.
Only if you're set. Only if you have everything tonight.
Yep. I mean, no, get it in.
Apply.
Apply.
Oh, I'm sorry, apply.
To apply, yeah.
Okay.
Apply on your, I think it's February 5th, I believe, or whatever. Whatever that day is, right.
And then, okay.
And then go through the process from there.
Okay. So if you apply, so you go in here and review it, everything else would be lined up?
We don't have anyone yet.
Okay.
The question is, who, you know, who would you like?
It's who, whoever. We have a list of several.
Yep.
And you can pick one of them and deal directly with them. We don't want to be involved in, we don't want to be a middleman. We just want to see a final end product that says, you're all set.
Yep.
Okay.
I assume, you know, I know that we have to look through site plan review.
Yes.
And special permit.
You've got site plan review, site plan approval, special permit for aquifer use.
Yep.
And probably because you're disturbing more than 40,000 square feet of soil, that's kind of a minor thing, but you know, that's.
Through that stormwater.
So the stormwater thing.
Correct.
Basically, you know, it's a MH. MS.
MS4.
MS4, yeah.
Yep.
And so those don't.
Correct.
So if you were to file on February 5th, we normally schedule you for March 5th, but we've been trying for the public hearing.
Okay.
But we have been trying to keep the first Tuesday open for planning. We consult with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Okay.
So I'd say we probably would be looking at a public hearing for like March 19th.
Okay, public hearing on the 19th.
If you haven't, have you got all your plans ready yet?
We're about 75% complete.
Okay, and from what, from what you're saying, you might have a difficult time getting a reviewing engineer to get everything done in four weeks.
Oh, yes, we understand that.
So that way if you apply between now and for, and March 19th.
Yep.
Or March 18th, actually.
Yep.
You know, get everything addressed.
That would work fine.
You can, you can reach out to the peer review engineers anytime. You don't have to wait until you file.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
So we can, we can do that.
If you want to send me an email at planning@ema, I'll send you the peer review list.
Yeah, we went through that with, you know, American River across the street.
Oh, you haven't now? It hasn't changed since then?
Yeah.
I'll send you another copy if you can't find that one.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Do you have a copy of the, or that's of an application?
Um, I do not.
Can this file?
Good.
Do you have a couple copies of that? I'll sign one, bring up with the town clerk. This is the basic stuff, you know, the address, contacts.
Filing fee?
It would be for a, how big is the total building?
So total building is, is just under.
Eighty-three, about eighty-three, 80,359 square feet.
Eighty-four hundred square feet?
Total.
So we don't handle the money anyway.
Right.
But you want, you want to be ready. Okay, I understand that. Let's see. Eighty, said 8400 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pardon? Eighty-four thousand, no, 8,359.
Yeah, 8400 square feet, yeah. An 84,000 would be two plus eight for that building, yeah. Your filing fee is going to be roughly 350 bucks.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Roughly 350 dollars. Because I, you know, in that way, I'll give you an exact date when you, when you bring the form in, but it's going to be in that range. It's not going to be, you know, what did you pay for it for yourself.
Okay, great.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, see you then.
Yep.
Carlos? Nieto?
Nieto.
Nieto.
My name is Carlos Nieto, I'm a last department with the Berkshire Design Group. And we are here in front of you for application for the site plan review of the North Hadley Fire Substation that we're doing for the town of Hadley. I have application, nine application packets and plans with me. And just to give you a quick description of what we are proposing, the site is off of River Drive, in the north part of River Drive, intersection with Stockbridge Road, just what you're seeing here. It's a total of nine acre parcel. You're, the drawing here just to be able to see the details, doesn't show the rest of the parcel. There's a survey, full survey of the parcel included in the package, so you can see the rest of the parcel.
Got enough parking?
Yes, yes.
Where is the boundary? How far are you from that, the old tobacco bar?
We are farther than, I would say, almost 400 feet or so, or more from the tobacco bar. This is about 100, almost 180 feet and we're probably twice the distance. I can pull out a plan and show you.
No, that's fine, we don't need that kind of.
Okay, yeah. And it's all, again, in the plans. The size of the building itself is around 5,300 square feet. We are looking at two curb cuts, one 24-foot curb cut and a 37-foot curb cut, but that will serve the bays and the 24-foot curb cut is to separate the two uses, emergency use and then the general parking for who are going to be coming here.
Okay.
Again, parking bays, we have some screening plantings for the parking, so that it's screened from the street per the regulations. The whole site is going to be, drainage-wise is going to be sheet flowing, so we don't have any catch basins. It's going to go into a very shallow infiltration pond that's going to be there. So we are expecting all the drainage for the site to be basically handled in the site with an overflow that will go to municipal in events of very high rainfall.
It will go where?
To the municipal system. There's a catch basin right here, we have an overflow.
We typically don't allow you.
As a no overflow.
So we're handling all the water. We have a full drainage report that you will see. We're handling all the water on site, but there's always a failsafe, an overflow that we normally propose, so.
Who's, who's the engineering, who's doing the review on this?
Matt McDonald is doing the peer review.
Who?
Matt McDonald.
Oh, Matt McDonald, okay. Okay.
Yeah, that, usually the, they do not, the town highway department.
What is the drainage system being designed for? What year storm?
Oh, for a two-year storm.
No, what's the peak, what's the storm being, what, 25-year storm, 100-year storm?
A hundred years, I believe it's up to, I mean, I would refer that to our engineer who is the one who did all the calculations and he's going over through your regulations. So he's designing to that. I believe it's, I believe it's a 10-year storm that he's modeling for, the smallest, the most frequent storm that he's modeling for.
Okay. It needs to be a minimum 25-year storm. Let him know that.
Yeah, and I'm 99% sure that he's gone through that in the report.
Just who, curiosity, I mean, this is a big parcel and it seems like you're putting this right in the middle, so it kind of eliminates any other possibilities for expansion for some other town building.
So we've set back, there is actually more space on the, on the right side than on the left, so it's not exactly right in the middle. But there is, I understand what you're saying. There's some space here. There is a existing knoll or elevation that we have in here. And we were, the idea of having the building here, first of all, is to have some separation from the, a border on one side, so that's why we are not on top of the knoll, because we will be higher. And then we did not put the building farther to the right because this is lower. So we wanted the building to be not on the top of the knoll, but not on the lowest point of this, of the parcel where you could have some issues with drainage. So that, that's the logic of the location. There was a request to have the public entrance or the.
That was public entrance question?
Public entrance just right across from Stockbridge Road, just to create a good intersection. So that's also one of the reasons why that is there. And then if we were to move this and wanting to have this somewhere else, if we flipped it or did anything else, we would start using more, much more land and more paving. So that's the reasoning why this is located where it is.
Okay.
What's going to be to the east where you've just got it all gray there?
This.
Back.
Oh, the back, it's just.
I mean, west, excuse me, west, yeah.
The west. The parcel's going to stay as it is right now. There might be some future plans for, for the rest of the parcel, but as of right now, it's just going to stay as agricultural fields or as fields, open fields.
Okay.
And the extent of the actual work itself is pretty much what you're seeing on the green.
How big, how big of an area is that?
It's less than about two acres, 1.98 of an acre. So there are some resource areas outside of the work area that we did an RDA with Conservation Commission to make sure that they understood that we were doing work outside of that area. So that's been already done.
In your calculations for the drainage, in as much as there's a knoll and the water's going to run certainly to the south, and are you calculating that into your drainage as well? Or just, just the part that's in light green?
Well, it's a part that we are developing because you, you look at pre-development and post-development of the site. So, and then there's a comparison between the two.
But the natural topography is such that the water is going to drain from the knoll down into that property, so.
Well, we've elevated, I mean, the, the building is elevated enough that the water will, will sheet flow away from it, from one side or from the other. And it's lower, sorry, it's lower towards, and I think that'll be.
Those are all questions for the public hearings.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're not trying to analyze it tonight, we're just trying to get basic information.
The topography is lower on the west.
No, but before they go ahead with all the engineering studies, there's a certain question that we're going to ask.
Yes, yeah. So the topography is actually lower on the west side, so on the backside of this. So the water actually moves towards the back.
You have, you have an application for us?
Yes, I have.
Nineteen? Yeah, list is ready.
This application page.
Yep.
Then we have, I have two copies of the storm drainage report.
Okay.
Full copies. And then there's nine copies of basically the, it also has a copy of the application and extra materials and descriptions of the project.
And those are all.
And then these are two copies of the labels and then 20 of my notes for the mailings.
I'll make a motion to waive the filing fee for this project.
Okay, second. Motion, second to waive filing fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes 4-0, what happens? Now, when, who do I give these to to get stamps put on them? And who do I give, because we're going to waive all fees, somebody's going to be paying for the legal notices.
Okay.
And for the stamps for this, not the planning board.
Okay.
That we normally pay for.
Okay.
So who do I contact to give that stuff to?
You can contact me.
Okay, so when I get this ready to be mailed, I give them to you. And when I get the invoice for the Daily Hampshire Gazette, I give that to you.
Yes.
And you'll get it taken care of.
Yes.
Okay. If you want to make sure before we get.
Just to get that ahead of time, all right.
If you want to dismiss this in as much as the select board is here, it seems like it's certainly a big site for a little building. And there are, have to be other plans, so you, is that going to be the main entrance if there are other buildings? And so that has to be worked into the system as well. In other words, it seems to be in the proper location that the Stockbridge intersection there. And, but is that road going to be sufficiently wide? Because obviously, the town owns the land, they're going to do something with it. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe wider intersection with a provider or something like that, or have the ability to do it.
Yeah.
This is approved.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Bill, you were going to.
For three, we'll go. There is no.
And we'll definitely go into more detail when we present this. We'll definitely go into more, more detail on these questions that you have, definitely when we get to that point.
Erosion sediment control, not that one. Erosion and sediment control, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And then I have nine copies of the plans.
Yeah, put them on the table in here.
Would you make, well, actually, would you make sure that one of them gets to the town clerk when you file the form?
Perfect.
So one of the nine?
You take one of the nine with you and give it to the town clerk when you file that application.
Perfect. And then I will write one of these.
Yeah, you can take one of those. Actually, take one of the drainage reports too.
Okay.
Because I only need one drainage report. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isner?
Good evening, gentlemen. I have three items this evening. Item number one is Mr. Shumway's very small definitive subdivision final plan.
Okay.
Decision has been recorded in the registry, duly noted on this plan. The town clerk has signed off that the 20-day appeal period has passed. So we would just like that to be signed so that it can be recorded.
You'll send me a PDF list after. Well, do you copy it with, or just?
With the signatures or not?
With the signatures.
Yeah, I can scan it. Item number two, we'll call it 103 South Maple Street. It's plenty of takes land and set out a lot to give to one of their, their house. So this is pretty tough and dry. Pete's house is on this lot here. This is all currently hayland. Fred Seagull lives here. I'm going to cut the lot out right here. So he's wearing the aquifer, we need 200 feet of frontage, 40,000 square feet. We have 200 feet of frontage and two and a half acres, so we have plenty of area to be adequate frontage. The 150-foot box fits in it.
Will that perk?
I believe they have perked it.
Okay, so I know when they were looking to do this, this, well, actually the perk, this, this right here near the road perked, you're right. This, this was perkable back here where they had a problem to wooden perk.
I'm typically going through all that process already.
So what street number are you giving this?
No, it's, the house is 103, Seagull is 111. I'm not giving it any number, I, just for your record, so you can, I don't know what the house number is going to be. This one is 44 Chamorro Road. And this is going to, this one's a little interesting in that it's somewhat complex. So I try to draw a colored picture so you can understand what's going on. Basically combining land on one lot into another, just to help you understand what's going on. So the yellow is the land that's associated with 44 Chamorro Road. The owner of 44 Chamorro Road also happens to be the owner of 46 Chamorro Road. This was Billy Grabiak's house and his stepdaughter has bought that house and is selling her house and they're all moving in to this house. So we're cutting out the pink lot from 44, which leaves us the orange lot that's going to get combined with the existing property at 46, which is then becoming the blue lot. A lot of stuff happening, but nothing.
What's the fold with the frontage on the pink lot?
191.
Oh, that is, that is accurate, okay.
Yeah, plus 40.
Okay.
And then you've got the 150-foot box there, and you've got more than 40, you've got 52,000 square feet. So everything, everything works according to the bylaw.
And then what is your frontage for what is now the blue lot?
That is 5789 plus 2748 and 2309. And I did put a note on here that this lot was previously approved as a flag lot and this land has been combined with it since, and then we're just going to combine this with it now.
Okay, so this does not have?
200.
200.
No, that's okay.
Guess that is okay.
And we're just increasing the frontage of the pre-existing flag lot, so. And we're just increasing the frontage of the pre-existing flag lot, so. Two thirty-one fifty.
Two thirty-one, everything?
Thirty-one fifty.
Two thirty.
Oh, plus this. Two thirty-one fifty here.
Two thirty-one.
Fifty, and fifty-seven eighty-nine, twenty-seven forty-eight.
Yep.
Twenty-three oh nine.
Just two, two fifty.
Randy, you got a better pen. This John Seibert pen doesn't have the ink in it.
I don't have any pen.
Oh.
Mister Wonder is wanting to.
I have an extra. Pass that down.
And it's not even on, and she's gonna.
So it's like, Seibert's keeping it.
But see, you trust Mike more than you do. That one's just too bad.
She's dead.
You want one?
Here.
Tell it, boy, it's so cold in here, the pins don't work.
Just operator area, never mind.
If Millie Fleibert could see this fall, she'd turn over in a grave. She was the fourth grade teacher that taught us penmanship. Millie Fleibert.
At least you've got to learn it, you're not teaching it anymore apparently. All right, that's all I have, gentlemen. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Did this was yours?
Keep one of these with our copy.
Sure.
Randy, you don't need all of these.
However, that was good explanation with a color delivery.
Yes, that was good.
Okay, next, we will open the public hearing with Melissa Tepp. And for whatever reason, I bet to bring, didn't get a copy in here with the legal notice. Why, we'll just try to remember what we, what the legal notice said, but the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January nineteenth at seven fifteen PM, Senior Center for the application. Melissa Tepp to a home occupation, home business at Stockbridge Street. And the home business is physiotherapy.
Psychotherapy.
Psychotherapy.
Yes.
Okay, psychotherapy. And, uh, that's it. We'll publish it in the newspaper. Jan, December thirty-first and January seventh, I believe are the dates.
Good.
Okay. Go ahead, let us know what you want to do.
Oh, application is already in. I am a psychotherapist and have been for thirty-two years, and I have an office in Northampton. And I wanted to move my office into Hadley, which is my town. And so I have an office space at home, which is on the first floor. And I've given you plans already and a drawing of the site. There's parked, there's a small area to park two cars. I only see one person at a time. I see adults who are high-functioning, are just going through transitions in their lives, and I'm helping out with those transitions.
Just for me and for the audience, what exactly is a psychotherapy?
Um, it's, it's like a psychologist, an LICSW. So I do counseling with people, yeah.
Okay. How many anticipated patients a day would you think you'd be seeing?
Um, I would see between six to eight.
A day?
Yeah.
Every day? Five days a week?
Yeah, five days a week. My hours would be from eight to six. But there's flexibility in there. That's why they're so long. And so I maybe see twenty-five, twenty-eight people a week, depending on the week, yeah.
Question from the board?
Are you Yodin or anything?
Neither.
What are you?
I would say I specialize in transitions and grief. And I work with people who have been diagnosed with medical issues and are struggling with the transition in their life around that. I also teach mindfulness-based stress reduction and have for about twenty years. So I deal with people who have really high stress and are trying to find ways to mitigate that and have higher quality of life.
So you'll have no employees?
No employees, solo practice, right. Yeah, and has been for many years, yeah.
Any other questions? Question from the audience? Most people are here for you. Big a butterslip, I think there's four on fours, three on fours.
What's that?
I see you have a big a butterslip, I think there was three or four butters.
Right, yeah.
There was a issue that was raised by the building inspector.
Okay, like Tim? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you aware that, apparently you have already built the addition?
Yes, that's correct.
But if the addition is to be used for commercial purposes, there might be alterations required into the building code.
Right, and I, I did, Tim did talk with us about that. And I've been, my office in Northampton is on the third floor of Sylvester's Restaurant on Pleasant Street. And so I don't have accessibility in that building. And so I've been renting space in town to have it be accessible for people with handicap or disability issues. And so this is the woman that I currently rent space from. It's available on a regular basis. This building was renovated, it's a building right across the street from the police station on Center Street. And they have, it's the two handicap bathrooms, an accessible room right inside the door. I see already a couple clients there. So anybody who has that issue, I would see in Northampton.
Okay, that, that's not an issue for us.
Right.
This is an issue for you and the building inspector that he will allow that.
Right.
Okay, I think it's up to his, I'm not sure he can allow that. If you're putting in a new business, I believe you may have to make it handy, that's up to you. It's up to the building inspector and you as far as what the requirements of making it handicapped accessible. Yeah, just wanted to be sure that you're aware of.
Okay.
The issue had perplexed you.
Okay, so, so if I need to, I can talk with.
That's the, talking to the building inspector, that's out of our jurisdiction. We're basically making you aware.
Okay, thank you.
Full catastrophe, you live.
Right, well read. It's a good book. Yeah. Thank you.
So I will make a motion to grant the application for a home business special permit based upon the following findings. General, formally with the general purposes of the bylaw, not detrimental to the establishment of future characters in the neighborhood. It wasn't a plan. Okay, but it's, um, it would be within an existing structure, though.
Yes.
And, uh, eight AM to six PM. That means your, you made your last appointment is enough before six, so that people vacate at six.
Yeah, yeah. Those are the kind of outside perimeter.
Okay.
Right.
The home business will clearly be incidental and secondary as compared to the residential purposes of the property. Shall be conducted in such a manner as it does not give an outward appearance of a business expect, except as specifically allowed for signage and parking. One business per residential property, not more than forty percent of the floor area. One sign not to exceed two square feet. You're not gonna be offering incidental goods from sale, you're not creating goods. Hours of operation, deliveries of products, you won't be getting deliveries of products. It's not an accessory structure. No obnoxious, toxic, or hazardous owners, please. No noise in excess of normal household noise. You won't be storing anything. No employees. Client parking has been provided. You don't need to store heavy vehicle or other heavy equipment. You're not using any vehicles. Any new lighting? Do you add any lighting?
Outside lighting.
Oh, yeah, there's actually a light that's on the little path to the entrance that we added up.
So it will not exceed one foot candle at the boundary level. Flag lot. You don't have the review period anymore. All special permits for home businesses are non-transferable and are issued to the applicant for a specific business. No redesign. Subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including conservation commission, board of health. Any projects direct, changes directed by other boards must be approved by the planning board. And that's it. That is the motion. Your motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero one, that's it.
Thank you very much.
We'll get to the library in a minute.
They didn't sign up for anything?
They're on the agenda.
Were they here from the library?
Yes.
Oh, okay, they didn't sign in.
Well, I put them on the agenda.
All right, okay. All right, okay.
My name is Phil O'Brien. I'm at Johnson Roberts, I'm an architect for the library. Got a couple other folks here, if there are any questions that come up. Some information I want to share with the board. We forwarded this information ahead of time. I'm gonna start with the planting plan. This is the planting plan for the library proper. As you know, middle street is here, we're coming in on the side. This connects into the rest of the senior center lodge, and the exit drive comes out along it here. The main entrance to the library is off of the lot here. We've got a series of parking lot trees to provide shade inside the lot. These match the trees that are happening in the rest of the senior center.
What, what of, any of those trees existing, and they're all new?
There's, there are trees that exist out.
In the, in the, in the, in the town right away, but there's like nothing?
There's, there's, there's nothing on the property, no, that's staying. That's right, that's, these are new, right. So these are honeysuckle that matches the trees that were proposed, that are proposed for the, for the senior center that happens. And that is all the larger trees that happen around in the parking areas. We have a cousa dogwood. There's some dogwoods that actually happened out in front of the existing library on their front lawn. And the senior center is also posing specimens cousa dogwood on their property. So again, we're trying to tie the two properties together. We've got some smaller, this is the cousa dogwood here on the front lawn. We've got some smaller plantings, foundation plantings, and then some plantings to, in around some of the utilities that we have in the back lawn. And then we have a small garden that we're creating with some small plants where you might wanna go sit. People can certainly sit in the front lawn if they like, we tried to create a little spot if somebody wanted to go up and kind of take a look at the, at the flowers and bushes outside. That's it for the, the planting. The other thing that you folks had asked about specifically, and we have shown you a number of earlier renditions of the, of the plan. These are the most up to date. This is where we are right now. We're into the, just getting into the working drawing phase. And so the design of the building is pretty much set at this point. We wanted to show you these upgraded drawings. These, these renderings haven't changed very much from what we showed the board earlier. But there was some minor modifications in the layout of some of the windows and so forth, and we just wanted you to see that. We also took a closer look at some of the coloring on the building and wanted to make sure that we were as close as we could be in terms of what we're planning for the coloring of the brick masonry. So obviously a red brick masonry that we're using to kind of pick up on the color from the, it's gonna be compatible. We're trying to find something that's very similar to the, the plan is to have a brick that's very similar to what happens at the existing library. Kind of a medium gray roof, we're looking at asphalt shingle roof for the entire roof system. And then we have some cast stone, and the idea there is it's kind of a warm beige color, like a, like a natural limestone.
All the trim and everything else?
This is, this is all that kind of cast stone limestone trim.
No, 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 the white and everything else in there.
This, that's all, that's all cast stone.
Oh, that's all stone?
That's all stone. Well, up high, it's very thin. So we don't have to support all that load there.
Okay, that's what we've been about.
So it's a, it's a heavy masonry product down here, and we're in the lintels, and then much lighter so that we can support it off the structure.
Very major, ma, low maintenance, maintenance, precise.
Yes, that's the idea, right, right. Basically, you target.
I wish the senior center did that, because the senior center's gonna pay big bucks in thirty-four, thirty years to paint that place.
I hope that's.
Excellent design, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How much wood is being used in the building? What percentage of the construction materials are wood? The reason I'm asking is I was reading in the Wall Street Journal a couple weeks ago that the place, Lumberfield, has collapsed. It's fifty percent from July when things were first coming to the forest.
Uh, the structure on this building is steel.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't expect any savings in that, but there's a little bit of wood trim and then a lot of furnishings and so forth of wood. We're hoping that will help with the cost of that material. But we did look at the, we did look at wood framing for the building. We just can't take the wind loads on a building like this and bring them down into the ground with wood without spending a lot of money. All right, just wanted to give you an update. I know that you would ask to, to take a closer look, for example, at some of these materials. And I'm wondering whether or not you would like us to come back with the actual materials once they've been approved during the construction phase? Is that something you'd like to see? The idea is to try to do a, a medium gray asphalt shingle roof. But I don't know what the brand name is of the product that's gonna get submitted to us for approval, for example. And I'm wondering if you'd like to see that.
No, I mean, we really want, we want to see a picture of what you're showing there. It's, what, show us what you're going to build ultimately, when you finally get everything nailed up.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, okay. You know, I mean, brick is brick, I mean, red brick is red brick, to be honest with you. And you try to match existing library, existing buildings in town.
Terms of the coloring.
We're, we're not gonna be super fussy and say that red brick is this versus this red brick is better. We're, we're, we're not that much.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that you get the information. Just wanted to make sure that you get the information.
Asphalt shingle, you're putting a gray asphalt shingle on it, be a white gray large, dark gray.
Kind of a medium gray.
Again, I mean, a medium gray, okay. I mean, we're not going to sit here and nitpick to that point.
Okay.
You know, it's going to be white, white, white stone, okay? I mean, there's a gazillion different shades of white. And, you know, if you bring something in, from my experience with white stone, you could be putting something under that's a little slightly different than a white.
Yeah.
Because that's the nature of the beast.
Across the building as well, yeah.
You know, and it, we're not going to nitpick to that extent, you know? Brick building, white trim, white stone, white gray here, medium gray asphalt, to be honest, from my point of view, that's good enough for me. That picture, you go up, you build something that looks very, very close to that, that's, that's all I'm looking for. At least for Mike, you know, I'm not about the rest of it, they feel any different. Lighting?
The site lighting hasn't changed very much since the, the last time we showed that to you. I think I included a, a lighting plan in the package I gave you.
Right.
We had a, a minor shift in one of our sightlights in this area. We had a, a, a sightlight on that island there and, in order to provide access to the parking at the back of that church, where one, the one is, we had to slide that light fixture over slightly and let me do some of the calculations slightly, but basically it's essentially the same.
Okay. Is the name Goodwood Memorial Library going with the new building?
I understand it as no. The Goodwood Memorial, I understand is, is the, is upstairs in the existing building. There's plaques up there now, and that memorial is going to stay in that building. And so I'm not aware of anything other than public library at this point, but we don't, at this point, have any, we don't have any plans to put a sign on the building. It's up. We are looking at signage out in the front lawn, we're working with senior center right now to figure out what the best solution is to that. The library has an existing sign that sits out there now, they're thinking they might want to move it, there's an existing sign out there now for the senior center.
What, this is something, what is it going to be called simply the Hadley Library?
The working name of the library is the Hadley Public Library right now, but that's our working name.
But there's a big, big donor. But that's, that's what we've been working with, that's what it says on all of our plans, the Hadley Public Library. And if, if that name changes, we're happy to.
Yeah, the sign location?
The signage, we're still working with the senior center right now, this is, there's an existing senior center sign that sits out here now, the library has a sign that they would like to move. There's talk that we might be able to consolidate that into a single sign, given the amount of space that's there and the trees. We haven't, we haven't worked that out yet with the.
Be aware of the setback that the.
Great compliance is slightly by it all, sixty-four square feet.
So we'll, once, once we get that settled with the senior center, we'll come back and make a.
The front yard is, look at that, yeah.
Yeah. There's, there's a sign out there now for the senior center, and there's a sign out here now for, there's actually two signs, there's, there's one on Route nine and then there's, there's a larger one here on, on Middle.
Are you soliciting donations for this?
I personally am not, but I'm sure the folks at the library would.
Next one, what do you consider a big donor?
I, I don't, I'm not aware. But you want to talk about that, Allison? Well, whether or not there is a limit to what you can donate, my guess is that you could donate as much as you want, but I don't know that anybody has made the determination that they've shared with me that they will name the building after you if you give a certain amount of money, I'm not aware of that.
Well, we could talk, Mike. There is a pledge form online and it does list some naming opportunities, there's no building naming opportunity, but individual rooms have individual.
I personally would like to live or simply call the Hadley Public Library and not named after anybody.
Well, that is currently our working name.
That's my two cents.
So this, but there's, there is no naming opportunity at this point?
There is no identified naming opportunity for the building now.
I just couldn't get his name on the old library.
I don't know the answer to that.
Couldn't get his name on the old library.
He was one of the original trustees, in fact, he was the one who took the money because Edward Hopkins died. So he was the original, one of the original trustees, and the trustees still live on, left quite as old as the school.
The last board I had was a floor plan, if you were interested in seeing.
Any question?
That hasn't, that hasn't changed.
Yeah, what was, what was the date of the prior meeting when we approved it?
Second meeting in December.
December.
Third Tuesday of November.
November twentieth, of course.
Yeah, November twentieth, okay.
November twentieth.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the site, the original site plan as approved November twenty as follows. Board determines the proposed changes are not significant or major and could be addressed without reopening the public hearing. And what we have reviewed is, and do you have, what, just to get the, read off the dates on that, that plan set, that's what you said, what you emailed to us, correct?
Yes. This is dated the second of October, two thousand and eighteen. The location plan is dated eleven January, two thousand and eighteen.
So we'll go with the plans as, and what I'll do is I'll print out what you sent us and attach it so that there's no confusion. But we're working off the revised plans of October two, twenty eighteen, and of January eleven, twenty nineteen.
I might have a set of those if you want them. I might have a single set of those if you want them, eleven by seventeen.
No, I will print them out at eight and a half by eleven. You sent me the PDF of that.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so I have all of that, I'll just produce that at a smaller scale, just so there's no confusion about what we are approving. Okay, that's the motion to approve the plans as revised.
Any other discussion? You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero one absent.
There you go, Marilyn Mish.
Okay, I'm sure what most people are here for is the continuing discussion of the marijuana zoning bylaws proposed. And after our last meeting, I told much, I, you know, updated the draft, mailed it out to everybody that was on the mailing list, we got a number of comments back, and I have been trying to get in touch with somebody that's knowledgeable of the marijuana system, lack of better term. And I had two contacts, one of them was only here for a couple of days and I was not able to get in touch with them, but I was able to contact today a grower of cannabis that, that has been a grower for six plus years in Canada. And he is a grower, he is a consultant, and he's extremely knowledgeable, so he says, of cannabis. And I asked him a whole bunch of questions because of stuff on the internet, there's fact fiction, and how much of it is real and what's junk? And given that he's a grower, that may or may not prejudice a bunch of you with his comments. And I was extremely surprised at his replies to a bunch of this stuff. And I asked him, number one, does the stuff stink? Does it smell? And if it does, how much, you know, as far as is it a mild smell, is it overpowering, is it tolerable? And he says, there are strains of marijuana that smell, there are strains of marijuana that virtually have no odor, and everything in between, he says, and the odor has absolutely no relation to TL, to TLC. He says, some of it smells like fruit, and some of it smells like skunk. He says, he compared it to craft brewery, not like a commercial brewery, but if you've ever been to a craft brewery, he says, some of the odors and smells in a craft brewery will turn your stomach. He says, others find that aroma in a craft brewery very appealing, depending on your level of what you like. He says cannabis is very similar to that. He says, but it does have a strong odor. What's surprising to me, I asked him, does it smell all the time or just when it's blossoming? He says cannabis smells all the time. When it's blossoming, it has a very strong odor. But if it's just sitting there after and before the flowering, it does have an odor. He says it's not overpowering, but you definitely smell it.
How close do you have to be to it to smell it?
From what he says, depending how much is grown, I'll get into that. Okay, let me, let me, I will get into that. He had some interesting comments on zoning proposals. And, okay, basically, he says, you know, cannabis smells. He says that the odors can be controlled. I asked him, and this is, again, this is, he lives in Ontario, Canada, so you're going to consider the climate when you have some of these answers. I says, you know, do you open grow? Do you grow in buildings? Do you grow in greenhouses? What do you do? He says, there's open grow in Canada, but he says, given the climate, there's not much because the growing season is much smaller or shorter than you'll have down there in the lower states. I said, okay, that's understood. He says, there is some growing, but he says, not much. Almost everything that's grown in Canada is grown in enclosed buildings. He says, it's relatively easy, although expensive, to control odors in a building that's up to about fifty thousand square feet. If the building is up to a hundred thousand square feet, he says, we have very poor results controlling the odors on a building that large because of the volume of air that needs to be filtered, brought in and brought out. He says, when you have an enclosed building, he says, the air quality is everything to the quality of the product. You need to filter the air in and filter the air up. He says, if you don't filter the air in, but just bring air in, he says, you will probably be contaminating your cannabis in some way or form. He says, there, he says, there, there's pretty tight controls in Canada on the quality of the product, it's like there is proposed to be tight control on the quality and what's in the cannabis in Massachusetts. Less interesting, he said, you know, it's expensive. He says, a filtering system for approximately a twenty thousand square foot building, just the cost of the filtering system with the HVAC, he says, is fifty thousand dollars. He says, that's the equipment, plus the installation and the operation. And he says, you start talking bigger buildings, obviously it's more. He says, for a fifty thousand square foot building, the initial investment is probably somewhere in Canada between three to five million dollars minimum and up beyond that. He's depending what you want to cover. He says, so it's, it's pricey to get into it. He says, I recommend that you limit your zoning bylaw to nothing larger than fifty thousand square feet initially, and you only allow enclosed buildings. He says, do not allow open grow, and this, again, this is what he's telling me, do not allow greenhouses. He says, because marijuana to be controlled and good quality needs twelve hours of light every day and twelve hours of darkness, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The amount of light and the amount of darkness will greatly affect the quality of the marijuana. He says, too much of one, too much of the other, and you're going to have inconsistent quality. He says, and quality of marijuana, quality of cannabis is everything. He says, it's extremely profitable. He says, you're talking some serious money on the people growing the stuff. He says, if they can grow it properly. He says, so the bylaw you're proposing, he says, needs to have some kind of a, a size allowed to it where there's like a, a bit of an economy of scale. He says, if it's too small, nobody's going to be able to afford to do it, and if it's too large, he says, you're going to lose control. He says, start out with enclosed buildings, then after a couple of years, after you get some experience under yourself, and then you can say, well, you know, maybe now we want to allow this, or we want to allow that. And he says, pretty much where they're growing it is in industrial areas. He says, we do have some growing relatively close to residential areas. He said, but again, we're talking high filtered, high filtered stuff. He says, in a fifty thou, he's, he, then, his, his, he kept mentioning fifty thousand square foot building as a maximum. He says, we've had excellent results controlling odors on a fifty thousand square foot building. He says, I'll be honest with you, he says, you never filter out all of the odors. He says, always some escaping. But he says, up to the fifty thousand square foot building, for whatever reason, we've had great results filtering and keeping the odor so that it doesn't bother anybody. He says, we have a couple of hundred thousand square foot facilities around, and he says, and they're a disaster. Asked about security. He says, you know, fencing, door alarms, car wreaths, stuff to get in and out. He's, but to be honest with you, he says, I have never heard of a security breach at any marijuana facility in Canada, or at least in Ontario, where we are. He says, for some reason, he says, you know, people just aren't breaking into them. He says, they're not breaking into this, to, to stop stealing anything. He says, where some of the facilities are located, they're located, they're some very high-priced residential areas. He says, they're going to break into something, it's not going to break into a marijuana facility to steal, steal some plants, they're going to break into the homes. He says, and to be hon, he's, I'm, I'm not, you know, being a wise guy here, he says, we really have not had any issues with breaking and entering into the marijuana facilities. So, you know, he, I've got his name and phone number, he said, call me if you've got other questions, he's after your meetings, he's got some more questions, he says, you know, that you want me to try to give you answers to, he says, I'm glad to help you. Like I said, he's a grower, been a grower for in excess of six years, he's also a consultant to other facilities. I didn't ask him how much he grows, but it sounds like he's probably in the, you know, under the fifty thousand square foot, not a, he's not a big company growing stuff, he's kind of a single guy. He's part of a big, bigger consulting company to the cannabis industry, but as himself, he's not any kind of a monster grower.
Is cannabis growing regulated at the province level there or at the local level?
Both. It, it, the, the province allowed medical marijuana about, I think he said, six or seven years ago. And he says, a bunch of, some people jumped into it, and I think he said, I'm not sure if it was three or four years ago, it became much like here, the adult use, and he says that it's, there's a lot of places and people into it. And.
What about the number of growers allowed in the province? Is that at the province level or the, or the local municipality level?
It is, the number of growers is regulated by munis, by, hmm, they don't have munis, I don't want to call municipality, but it, he called it, it sounds like it's by, it's almost like a county, I think, that they have up there, as opposed to in individual towns. I mean, their governing is, is different than, than the states here, so I don't know, I mean, I didn't, I didn't get into that detail, but there's basically local controls and overall, the province of Ontario has controls. And I didn't get into, you know, how much of each is, I was more concerned with odors, how to control it, does it stink, and security and stuff, I wasn't into really, you know, who controls it, you know? Because when he was answering some of my questions, he seemed to be answering more about a Canada level as far as the governing, and that's understandable, he doesn't really that, understand it probably that much about Massachusetts, okay? So, just as a, as a, you know, I've got one more contact I want to talk to, this is a commercial grower in California. And we've probably all seen the stuff about the, the horror stories in California and everything else, and it comes from the New York Times and everything else, well, you know, again, that's a place that probably has more open grow.
Oregon too.
Well, yeah, but the New York Times had a thing. And like I said, the open grow in Canada is very little, not so much, I don't think, as far as the limiting factor of the controls as much as the climate, you know, they, their climate, you're talking probably five hundred miles north of here. So there's, you know, quite a difference in the growing season, so that self-regulates the outdoor grow there. He did say that cannabis is extremely sensitive to sucking up like a sponge, we talked about that, he says, and that's why the filtering of the air in is. And that's why the filtering of the air in is extremely critical, because if you don't have good air coming in, he said, you're not gonna get the good quality coming out. So, you know. Anybody got any questions that I just got talked about, that I would be, you know, more than willing to talk to the gentleman about? Yes?
Okay, so in Canada, um, are they allowed to do business with banks? Or is it like, for, for now, in the US, it's been that it has to be a cash business because banks are discouraged from doing business with these kinds of programs?
It's legal in all Canada now, it's legal.
Say that again, now it's what?
In Canada, is it legal for these growers to do, do their cash flow businesses with banks?
Oh, I didn't get into that.
Well, because the problem with the security and the, uh, the crime has been that, um, that they've had to be cash businesses, and so that's the risk, that's a big risk with security in the US.
Yeah, but it's certainly doubt that they have cash in the grow facility.
Well, I don't know, that's...
But it, in Canada, it's, it's a nationwide approval.
Right, so I'm guessing that they are...
US, it's not yet, and so, yeah. And the problem, it was on Sixty Minutes in Colorado, if you are in, in the business, you have a safe that's this big. You couldn't put it in the bank. But the FDIC did make exemptions for Colorado, obviously, to track the money, so, for tax purposes. Yeah, I, I didn't even ask him about that. That's, that's, that's... Anything else for now? Yes, sir?
Uh, did he say whether or not he was marketing his products for, uh, direct, like, smokeable intake? Or was it something that was being refined further into, uh, like oils or resins or something?
All of that. They, they, he, he did mention that when it was medical marijuana, it was really, uh, you know, there wasn't a big market for it, obviously. But now, under the commercial growing, they use it to smoke pot, regularly, old smoke pot, they make it into cookies, they make it into gummy bears, they make it into all kinds of things. It's, 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 the, from what he said, it's very much like here, the farmer, for lack of a term, the grower grows it and sells it to a, uh, processing facility. They don't typically process it on site. And they, the processing facility turns it into a variety of topics, you know, oils, um, you know, everything in, cookies, gummy bears, smoking, regular stuff like that. So it, it sees quite a, uh, variety of end uses.
No, I was just curious, more or less to, uh, I guess discern, you know, the high-quality standards that he's maintaining, uh, are often used for smokeable, direct ingestion products, you know, with the mycotoxins, the fungus, things like that. But when you further refine it, um, into the oils, at those processing facilities you mentioned, a lot of those things can be stripped away through distillation and through purification and hydrocarbons in that nature.
Yep.
So I guess, with that being said, it would, it would open up for, I guess, not looser if someone could grow, uh, I guess, a less, a less sealed, less, um, I guess, not a warehouse-type store, if you can get away with growing in a greenhouse, or, or even somebody, um, I guess, who would, who would pursue open cultivation, could take a slightly contaminated product, run it through a, a processing facility of pharmacological quality, cook it in your own condition. It could come out with a product that is clean, that would pass all natural regulation. Just to make the board aware of that. I mean, the guy sounds like a very good expert, and I agree with many of his points, but I would make the board aware of that, that it is not the only option to grow in a warehouse because you have to maintain a certain pinnacle quality. There are, there is room for, uh, you know, marketing products outside of that, that are variable quality, not your A-plus grade stuff.
Yeah, and, and, and that's true, but, and, and, but the less, from my experience working someplace that did, I mean, it was marijuana, but we processed stuff, the less processing you have to do, then the greater the profit. And you try to process as little as possible because it's simply less expensive and your profit margin is obviously more. So you don't wanna be processing six steps if you can do one or two steps.
Right, I think as a business entrepreneur, uh, standpoint, someone who's gonna invest in a warehouse-type facility, they certainly don't want to be spending extra time on processing. But if you're, you know, a vegetable farmer, who's making incredibly low margins, already have things like squash, corn, um, to get the type of margin that you get off that oil, of those, uh, something that has to be processed a few extra times, it's still vastly higher than that, you know, per...
And, and some of that is dependent on finding somebody that'll process it for you. You know, like, again, places where I worked, we're, we're getting into, we're getting way off track, so we'll leave that. Yeah.
Jim, you were mentioning the, uh, the upper limit would be fifty thousand square feet, and you didn't mention the lower limit. He said, there's a threshold.
I, I didn't ask him about a lower limit.
Okay.
I would, I would, I wasn't really mentioning much, I wanted to get information out of him. And when he said, you know, fifty thousand, that's, you know, that's, that's bigger than what obviously we wanna do right now. You know, we're looking at the, you know, the, the small grower. And, uh, he did say that a twenty thousand square foot building, that you would probably have about fifteen thousand square feet of actual canopy. And the canopy typically grows ten feet tall. Um, he says, with it, you know, with a, with a canopy of that size, he says, you will get, you know, a lot of product resulting out of it. I had to get into details, like what the yields are or anything like that, because I'm not really interested in the yield. I'm interested more in the, the mechanics of the problems and the products as opposed to, you know, profits and everything else. Yes, sir?
Did you get a sense from him on how many of these fifty thousand square foot or larger facilities there are in any particular area? Just a quick back of an envelope calculation, it's exactly the size of a football field. Fifty thousand square foot, it's three hundred feet, five hundred sixty, hundred sixty feet. So I'm just wondering if you had a feeling from how many?
I didn't ask him.
Yeah.
No, if you were eighty percent of the Canadian population lives within fifty miles of the US border, so...
It's completely different, it's up there. I mean, you can grow the stuff a hundred miles up, and there's nobody from miles and miles and miles.
Well, in the same thing, I went to the hearing where Deerfield approved a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of greenhouses for growing marijuana. So we'll be able to see if there's the reaction, the smell.
I read in the paper the other day that there are one point three million pounds of marijuana that has been processed in Oregon, that they don't know what to do with, there's oversupply there. So thinking that this is gonna be a moneymaker, the laws of supply and demand work here just like anything else, tobacco, potatoes, pigs.
Okay, okay. Any other questions on, on that particular topic? Okay. Getting onto some of the comments here. What are things that, before we get into the mailed-in comments, some of the stuff, a few things that were added to the bylaw is originally we only allow, we're going to allow enclosed facilities. And after talking with Bill after the meeting, we decide, Bill and I decided, um, only as two people granted, and it still can be amended, that, um, I was reading up on, somebody was mentioning about blackout greenhouses. So I looked up and read, what is a blackout greenhouse? And again, going back to what the gentleman said about twelve hours of light, twelve hours of darkness. A blackout greenhouse is a greenhouse that has a removable black canopy. And during the day, to, during the summer days, you close it to keep it to twelve hours of darkness, or twelve hour, twelve and twelve. And during the winter, you keep it open to get the sunlight in, and then you close it at night when you put the lights on so that the light does not escape into the atmosphere. And supposedly, from what I was reading, again, on the internet, of companies that actually sell these products, they work very well and they're very efficient in both terms of preventing light from coming in and light from escaping outwards. You know, they're not, obviously, you can still see some light, but it's not like it illuminates the sky. You can probably, you know, it's like probably looking at a, a house light or something like that off in the distance. That you can see some light there, but it's not going to be, uh, a problem to the neighbors and to the neighboring areas. And I, you know, Bill and I says, well, if that works and it prevents the lights, then, you know, a hoop house so-called, because these are really made for hoop houses and regular greenhouses, then what's the problem? If they, if it meets the bylaw in that term, then making it an enclosed building, because it'd be a lot less expensive to put a blackout greenhouse up than building some kind of a, you know, enclosed house, for lack of a better term, at least it might be a whole lot more economical.
So in our bylaw, you would still say an enclosed building, or do you have different wording?
The words are an enclosed building or blackout-style tight greenhouse, and we still have the words in there that no light and odors can escape.
I think that's the, the important thing, and the result we want is that, correct, Jim said, no, no light, no odors escape.
I got you.
How you accomplish that, well, zoning's not supposed to address construction issues anyway, criterials.
But what if a little light escapes?
Well, a li- a little light...
Or a little odor escapes and...
First of all, a little light will escape. I mean, we're not, we're not gonna try to say this, this place wants to be totally dark.
I wanted to ask that question.
Right, okay. As far as an odor escaping, we're still trying, we're still saying that no odor shall be discernible at the boundary. From what this gentleman told me today, I didn't get into that much detail. He says, odors will escape the building. He says, that is inevitable. Will the odors be a problem? He says, we have not had, we have some, uh, facilities that are relatively close to residential areas. I didn't say how close, it's, you know, quarter mile, half a mile, a hundred feet. He didn't really ask that, I didn't get into that kinda detail. He said, but where we have odor controls on the building, we have not had complaints of the area residents. So, you know, I, I need to, again, I talked with, I talked to him for twenty minutes today, just getting an overall broad-based picture. I had more questions I wanted to ask him, but I also didn't wanna spend two hours on the phone with him for that reason. So I'm, I intend to call him back again and find out, okay, now that we've, you know, from what we talked about tonight, some other comments go up, I have a chance to think about what he told me, what about these things? Like, you know, how close are you to this? What about this? And a few other, you know, more details to try to get some more, you know. And hopefully, this other gentleman from California, he would, I think, be a really good contact if I can get in touch with him because of the horror stories you read about it in newspaper, the New York Times on California. Okay, you know, again, how much of this is true? What's the real story? By speaking to a grower, my opinion was, take it with a grain of salt, but if the guy, if the person starts telling you what seems to be very good information, then you're probably getting, you know, he says, oh, there's no odor. Well, obviously, I wouldn't believe that. But from what he told me, I think he is credible on the stuff that he told me, okay? I mean, it doesn't seem like he's trying to buffalo me. He gave me some good input on, on what he would recommend that we do, um, so, hope him there.
So Jim, the only open grow then?
Yes?
I just wanna make a comment about the blackout curtains. I think they're actually used to keep the sunlight out of the plants that force them into flowering, as opposed to keeping the light in the greenhouse at night. The lights would be off. It's usually a twelve-hour daylight to twelve-hour night. And they're looking, when the longer days are there, that they're actually looking to limit the light in the greenhouse to put the plants in complete darkness. So the premise of light being on all night long is not usually something that's used in the growing of it.
Are you planning on selling marijuana seedlings?
It is a lot like a poinsettia crop.
It is.
Yeah.
Christmas.
I mean, if, if, if some light are coming in total darkness, that I don't believe the reverse would be true.
Some light coming out. He did make, he did mention something to me that we need to be cognizant of, that they do in Cali- that they do in Canada. They have growers that grow marijuana, I'm gonna use Mr. Giles here because he's the perfect example of this. Not that I'm gonna, he's gonna do this, but he's, he grows the marijuana, but he doesn't grow it from seed. I'm gonna be a grower that only grows marijuana from a seed into a plant so high. I now sell it to somebody else, they take, just like you, you buy your flowers and vegetables, everything else in the spring, you're a greenhouse grower, you only grow them to a certain point, and now you sell them to somebody else. Something that he mentioned, he said, that's has become a very big business in Canada, where this person grows the seedlings, and then they sell them to the home guy that has a dozen plants. They sell them to the commercial grower, so that the grower doesn't have to waste their time. They take that so-called, you know, six-inch plant and right away put them into the greenhouse, and they're, they gotta kickstart on grow- they don't, they're not, they're ahead of the, of the curve, if you would, on growing. And he says, that has become very, uh, a lot of it is, is going on in Canada. And he says, and to be honest with you, he says, that was something that fell through the, through the regulation loophole. So that, I says, that's, that's interesting where, you know, uh, you know, you're, you're buying a, a box of, you know, six, six plants for whatever, whatever the price might be.
Well, just like tomato, you're buying tomato plants, you're...
Yes, yes.
Whatever.
Yeah, yes, sir?
Do you think the state's seed-to-sale program would prevent that type of leakage?
A what?
The seed-to-sale program that this, the state has enacted in terms of tracking the cannabis from seed to flower to retail. Do you think that would prevent leakage to, from, to homeowners, to entities that you don't want to either hold in it?
Again, I, I, I don't know.
Homeowners, homeowners can have how many plants in their backyard? Twelve?
Twelve.
And if you got two people, you could have twenty-four.
Twelve's the...
Twelve total?
It's six per person, twelve per household.
That, that's, I, I, good question, I have no idea, because when he mentioned that to me, I was like, well, that's an interesting phenomenon. And, well, you know, it's possible. I, I, I don't know, I couldn't, you know, I, I don't have, it was just something to think about. And, uh, you know, um, you know, again, I know that the, 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 the idea of the, uh, um, ID tag or the electronic tag will cradle to grave, would that address it? I don't know.
You think it would? If it has a desired destination, a certain destination, what's supposed to...
The homeowner doesn't need the cradle-to-grave tag, so, that, again...
But the business does, is what I'm saying.
The business does.
The business would then be approaching.
That, that would be an interesting one. I, I don't know, gotta think that level of regulation would have to take place on the state level. Couldn't be, uh... Yeah, that's not something we can regulate, but I'm just, but that's something that isn't in the bylaw anywhere. They're assuming that everybody's gonna grow their own from seed and harvest it, and then obviously send it to a processor, but there's an in-between step that's very possible and could be very lucrative for some companies, for some people. Because, I mean, you wouldn't need a monster greenhouse and a very expensive one to grow, you know, a, a plant so big because the odor is virtually non-existent. I mean, it's slight, but it's certainly not like when it comes to the flower point. Anyways.
But it, it's a good point, Jim, because many farmers in Hadley get their plants, whether it be pepper plants or tobacco plants, from Canada. Evidently, Canada has a sweetheart deal with the farmers. If you have some natural gas on your property, uh, the farmer can get the greenhouse up and going for very little cost because they get the, the gas, natural gas free. So that's, that's why it, it certainly is a lot more profitable than growing heirloom tomatoes on Route forty-seven.
We, we did get a bunch of con- I mean, several comments, I didn't say much because several guys, um, emailed to us. One of them from a gentleman, um, basically typo changes, and I would say that for the typo change, we'll probably incorporate virtually all of them because it's simply correcting grammar errors. We've got another one that, uh... He said, allows for tier three in our residential districts.
That, that was a confusing one, because they seem to be referring, I don't know if it was a prior draft, but the numbering is different.
Yeah.
It, it refers to section twenty-nine, and we're in section thirty, and...
Yeah, exactly.
His numbers don't line up with our numbers. This was, uh, Michael Lopato?
Neil Loparia.
Oh, okay.
Lopato.
Lopar, okay, I can't read my own handwriting, sorry.
Maybe I pull up the prior, set it by... Maybe I pull up the prior set of bylaws that I had in the draft.
It might be, but this is the three.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, I touched on some of the points that you already spoke about today, about allowing for, to expand the definition of enclosed buildings to something like these blackout greenhouses, or high tunnels of some sort. And then the second point was just to allow for a larger tier package in the ag res, moving that to something like a tier three rather than a tier one. And we talked last meeting about a lot of the security upfront, and just the, you know, whether it be legality upfront, the things that the farmer, the grower has to do, it's fairly financially taxing. And so allowing for a tier three would give a little bit more room to make the necessary margins, especially, you know, given the saturation of the market works. You know, expecting in a few years having that, those two extra, whatever it is you think the twenty-five thousand square foot of tier threes, if I'm mistaken.
Yeah, tier three is-
Ten thousand.
Ten to twenty thousand square feet.
Right.
So expanding, I think that would allow not only for the farmer, the grower to make up for some of those initial fees, that being legal security, just to get the operation running, but also give room for when the, the market itself becomes saturated with products, you know, you can still produce a little bit more in that type of facility. And I think it also offered a happy middle ground between some of the concerns, more concerned folk, and people who sort of just wanted to hit the ground running. It's not a, it's not a massive package of the tier eleven that we're seeing in the industrial zones. And it's also not an open, open field cultivation. It is being enclosed structures that can be fit with whatever odor control mechanisms that the board and the state sees fit.
After what the gentleman told me today, um, tiers two through eleven in business district. I don't think we wanna go to tier two eleven in the business district. We probably wanna keep that in the industrial district. And maybe go tiers two through six in the business district. But he says fifty thousand square feet seems to be a very, seems to be the size of a building that you can control odors in. What better than the hundred thousand square foot? And the, the closer you get to a hundred thousand square feet and larger, he says, the more you lose control. He says, the ventilation systems don't seem to work in a larger building, for whatever reason, maybe because it's so massive. He said in a, he used the number, twenty thousand square foot building needs to have approximately a hundred thousand CFM ventilation. That's a hundred thousand square feet, hundred thousand cubic feet of air movement a minute. That is a massive amount of air. If you, I don't wanna say a, a hundred thousand square feet building is five times that large, because that doesn't work. It would be incrementally larger because of the cubic feet.
But plants don't care about air. They care, care about carbon dioxide.
No, no. To control the odors.
Oh, okay.
And he says the filtering system, they're using carbon filters. Carbon filters are expensive, make no doubt about it. And you need to filter the air coming in, again, this is what he's telling me, so I'm not, you know, taking this as absolute gospel. But when you think about it, it makes sense. If you're bringing out a hundred thousand square feet a minute, you're gonna be bringing in good air at, at least the same rate. Otherwise, you're gonna have some very weird air currents within the building. And he says to filter the, again, it all gets down to quality. He says, you know, quality in, good quality air coming in, air going out gives you good quality product. Which obviously makes sense. He said, if you're in an area where you may not have the best of air, he says, you wanna make sure you're filtering, you're filtering your air coming in. And so, he kept mentioning that anything above fifty thousand square feet is a very difficult, uh, size building to control the air quality.
Okay, so that raises another question. I'm not sure that we, that we address noise, because if you have equipment to move a hundred thousand cubic feet per minute, that's going to be-
Good point. Um, those fans will be humming. Yeah, that's, I, you're right, didn't even think of that one. You're right.
Just as an aside, what portion of Hampshire College is in Hadley? I was just talking about Hampshire College.
Their solar field. The police, the, the, the police grounds are in Hadley.
Buildings?
None of the campus structures.
It's all in Amherst.
Most of the support is in Hadley, like the, the solar.
Right.
I think part of the-
Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds. Maybe a very small portion of the, of the grounds for the, what do you call it? The, what is that? The Eric, what is that museum?
Eric Carl.
Eric Carl Museum. Some of the grounds are in Hadley. A lot of the walking paths around that are in Hadley. They use- No, no, very few are the actual campus that Bill's playing, but it's just like, you know, some of the support stuff in the, you know, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is they're, they're having severe financial problems over there, you probably read. The possibility exists that they're not gonna make it and uh-
Hampshire College?
Yeah.
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 There's a lot of real estate over there.
Talking about not admitting a freshman class or freshman class this fall.
Okay, I will put something in there about noise of HVAC, well, noise period, not HVAC.
So what, what are we resolving is, as far as the districts? Tier one through, in the business district?
In business district, I'm gonna recommend that we go-
Tiers two through six.
Yeah, tiers two through six. Industrials, industrial, yeah. Two through eleven, because I don't think we can say you can't put them in at all, because the town is voted to allow it. Because we'll just change that part of the, in the districts, and everything else will stay the same.
So how much in the industrial?
Two to eleven.
A hundred thousand square feet?
Yep. There was a number of people that were always concerned time and time again about setting back three hundred feet from the property line of the residential dwelling. And, you know, they wanna see five hundred, they wanna see a thousand. A thousand, I think if we put, well, if we put a thousand in, you're going to virtually eliminate anything in most business districts, and extremely limited in the industrial districts. And Attorney General will probably throw out the bylaw when they see that, because it's too restrictive. Five hundred feet will virtually eliminate much of the business districts, because except for Route nine from about the bike path to the Amherst Town Line, the business district is only five hundred feet deep to three hundred feet deep from Route nine. So we're going to eliminate all those areas, and when you look at it in detail, they're gonna probably say, that's too restrictive. Yes, sir.
Could you limit that restriction to just the rez-ag areas, and not have it applied to the industrial or business districts?
Then your point is?
I'm saying, well, I understand, the, the point Jim's making is, is if you, let's say, let's arbitrary, let's say a thousand square foot would make most of the industrial and business areas inaccessible, right?
Yes.
So why don't you exclude those from that, and just keep that, whatever the foot thing is, five hundred thousand to rez-ag? But not have that same restriction in the business.
And my, 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 my comment is gonna go back to that one is, what is a thousand feet going to get us that three hundred feet isn't going to get us?
Well, if you add the, I think part of the concern is if you add in, you know, how wide, I don't know the proper term, but how wide a road is, and how far a setback from a road is, we subtract that from the three hundred. If you're across the street from a potential facility, it gets very close, right? It's no longer really three hundred feet from-
The, the right of way of a road, if it's out Hadley, is a maximum of fifty feet.
Okay.
Okay, so the closest a facility could be, in worst case scenario, if you're on, if the house is on this side of the road, and there's a street, and then a marijuana grow facility, would be two hundred and fifty feet from the property, property line.
And Shattuck Road is narrower.
So do you go from the right of way, I mean, not the edge of the road?
The fifty, the right, the right of way is fifty feet wide maximum, I mean, with the exception of the industrial, well, I gotta put it into the venture way, because that's a sixty foot right of way. I believe that's the only sixty foot right of way in town, because that's the only industrial road in town. Everything else is fifty feet. Some, some places it's thirty-five feet. Well, a few of the very old roads-
Staples is, okay.
Okay, but, but that's part of what I was saying. We're not talking, we're talking about the right of way. The right of way of Shattuck Road is not fifty feet. If it's thirty feet, I'd be surprised in some spots.
It varies.
It's variable with county highway, county layout.
Somewhere, someplace in Shattuck, it's probably, what Bill says, someplace it might be fifty. But, you know, so the closest, worst case scenario, the closest it could be is two hundred and fifty feet.
You know, we've gotta get a, a sense of when are we regulating and when are we prohibiting? And certainly the thousand feet, like you were indicating, Jim, is, is you're regulating to the extent that you are indeed prohibiting.
Yeah.
So can we get a feel from the Attorney General in some way?
We'd have to be, the Attorney General won't give us that. We'd have to get it from town council.
Okay, well, from town council, because that's, zoning in a nutshell is the delicate balance between the rights of the individual landowner and the rights of the individual, like yourself as a neighbor. So that's the delicate balance that we're dealing with here, and you, we don't wanna purposely make a mistake in-
Well, yeah, we, we gotta get this one very close to, we gotta, we gotta make this one right.
So I think what we've been working through here is, is we've gone to saying you're gonna go away from open grow into inside grow with odor control. I think, I'd like to think that takes a lot of the edge off of how close the grow facility is, because a farmer can put up a tobacco shed pretty close to the property line. If this is even set back further, and it is unobtrusive, I think that controls most of the concern that was raised.
Of course, you mentioned the noise, it's all, I mean-
Well, that, that, that's something that-
I don't know the difference between two fifty and four fifty.
Well, the noise we can address separately. The, the noise, the noise, Bill, Bill made a good point. We start talking, and I didn't even think of that. But like anybody says, you've got some HVAC equipment, it can be extremely noisy. You go by the, I like to use the old grad research towers at UMass, because I went to school there. Those things are twenty stories up, but they hum, and you can hear them for, I wanna say, good half a mile. You go to some of the newer buildings on campus, particularly, I'll use the, um, the new, um, steam plant. As big as that is, and as much as that makes, the, the noise coming out of that facility is very little. So they've done a much better job addressing the noise at that place than the old grad research towers, and those things are, power are high in the air. So, you know, noise can be addressed, and we need to put something in here that noise at the boundary cannot exceed, you know, a number. Okay, and, you know.
And unlike smell, that we, you can go out and buy or rent a-
You, you can re-
A, a sound monitor, and you can, because part of the concern is with smell, it's arbitrary. I think-
It is arbitrary, and there is-
That's why California got into trouble, because the people sued, but they lost, because how do you, if it's not measurable, how do you prove there's damage? And that, that's kind of, I think, a concern in our neighborhood. For smell, we have no real, once, once this is gone, once it's gone for them, there's no recourse. But with sound, there is. Sound, you can say, specify-
Sound is very easy to measure, and, you know, just, you know, if you, if, we put a, a number in, like, it can't be more than, probably something like sixty decibels at the, at the boundary line. Just as a quick thing, so everybody understands noise. There was a, the-
Pet hotel.
The, the Pet Hotel across from Legion.
Yeah.
Was concerned about noise at that facility when, before they built it, because they're gonna be housing dogs twenty-four, seven. That's their, that's what they do. That's, that's perfectly fine. And there's a lot of residences, obviously, very close by. And the, uh, a lot of the neighbors, we were talking about noise, they said, we wanted to see, you know, zero decibels. And I worked enough with sound to know that's impossible. And so I brought a decibel meter into this room, and put it on a counter, and nobody made a noise. The decibel reading in this room, when it was dead quiet, was fifty-five. The noise of these fluorescent lamps made that much noise. Um, so we put a number on, I think it was like sixty-five or something like that, and just normal voice is probably in a sixty-five to seventy-five range. And so, once people understood what the numbers meant, they were much more comfortable with what the numbers that we put into the comment. So when you start hearing numbers of fifty-five and sixty, if, if that's what we use, just so you'll understand, fifty-five or sixty is probably something like this, okay? And, you know, that's not gonna be obtrusive to anybody.
And we know that they can do the job, because we take our dog there. You cannot hear the animals from outside the front door.
Yeah.
Jim, I think to your point of, you know, talking about input from various people about the setback, I think what our goal is, and your goal as well, is to craft a bylaw that people can, can support at town meeting. We don't want it to fail. It's, I think, in everybody's best interest that we pass it. And so, you know, what we don't want is to have people saying, well, I'm not voting for it because it's not restrictive enough, or it's too restricted. So, you know, in finding a number that, that people can feel comfortable with, and really feel that they can support, and, and so that it doesn't go the other way, you know, at town meeting.
Well, just, again, bear in mind, if it fails-
Right. No, that's my point. Right.
And to, to that point, you know, just, people will say, well, I want five hundred. Well, nobody has given us a real good reason on five hundred, why five hundred is better than three hundred. Or why a thousand is better than five hundred, because of the controls that we put on for noise, and sound, and odors, and everything else.
Appreciate all of those.
If those all work, the only thing is how close does that building appear? Closer than five hundred versus a thousand versus three hundred. And yeah, okay, it's a building. Well, like Bill said, you could put a, put up a tobacco shed fifty feet away from the road and perfectly be legal, and it would be much closer. This should be no more obtrus- or obtrusive than that tobacco shed. Should be a lot smaller in many cases, for a greenhouse full of chickens.
Right, that probably a thousand feet would be, would not be something that a lot of people could support and feel is middle ground. But to, to Ken's point, it might be worth consideration to have a different number for ag res district, none in the other, if that's possible. I mean, because we understand business and industrial, the sites are limited, you know? But it's, you know, in neighborhoods, that's the concern.
I think-
So whether it can be differentiated that way, I don't know.
That's, that's a good, I mean, we'll chat with Joe Bart in that, because-
I don't know what point should have any significant restrictions at all. I don't think we should have any significant restrictions at all in industrial.
Was that three fifty everywhere, or why?
Ag res, yeah.
Well, there are houses in- Bill, Bill, I was thinking one thing, and Bill just went down exactly what I was thinking, to address what you said about the road. If you go to fifty foot road, you could be theoretically two hundred and fifty feet from the property line, or from the, I mean, yeah.
Growing facility.
Growing facility. So maybe we make the three hundred, three fifty, that way it ensures you're three hundred feet from the road. And for the house that's on this side with the fifty foot right of way and that, and of course, if we run the road, the road is thirty feet wide and you're a little further back.
And that would ensure people walking, children waiting for the bus, whatever, would still be three hundred feet.
Yes.
I, I would feel that about that.
Yes, sir.
The point we always get back to, if you can't smell the cannabis, if you can't see the cannabis, and if you can't hear any noises from the property line, what would be the real issue? I feel like there's a lot of limiting factors for farmers already. And I don't see the point of having extra footage for the buffer zones. Just doesn't really make sense if you can't smell it, see it, or hear it.
Again, we're getting back to the point that we're trying to find a middle ground where everybody is, like I said, when I, when we started this a few months ago, the best we're going to do is fifty percent of the farmers will hate it, and fifty percent of the residents are going to hate it. And if we do better than that, we're probably not going to. We're going to be, we're trying to get the fifty-fifty split, and I'm trying to, I'm not really being facetious here, I'm really relatively honest that, you know, I mean, hopefully we do better than that. But that's, hopefully, where we can get at least to a ground where most people support this. And certainly, we go to town meeting, we need two-thirds. Okay? And this is, this is the probably the most difficult bylaw we've had to work on since the three of us have been on this board, and that's quite a while. Okay? So yeah, we're, we're trying to listen to everybody and find some kind of a middle ground without, you know, hopefully, we, this passes in the spring, uh, this passes in May. And maybe a year or two from now, we're back here amending this bylaw, because we now have experience that says, you know, hey, this really isn't so bad. Maybe we allow this now, maybe we allow this, maybe we allow some open grow. Maybe we, we find something else out that, you know, the odors aren't that bad, and we find out, you know, you know, it is what it is and we want to keep with it.
Yeah, you may find that you can plant open grow at your own risk. And if there is odor, you may be required to plow it under. But if you can plant odor, low odor, you might be able to do it.
The gentleman I talked to today says there are, there are some strains of marijuana that have a very low odor. He started mentioning brands, things, I mean, you know, I, I don't care about the brand, I don't care about exactly what they're called. I mean, that's, the fact that they exist is interesting. And what really surprised me, I was, was under the impression, the greater the odor, the greater TLC. He's, that's not true at all, there's absolutely no correlation that he's aware of between odor and TLC. He says the vast majority of strains do smell. He did say some smells have a fruity smell, some smells like strawberries. I said, well, you find, no, but I doubt anybody's going to complain about strawberries.
In a previous, in a previous meeting, did you mention that your family had some farmland, had a lot of farmland?
Um, yeah, there's a decent amount.
Just trying to figure out who you, who you work. What was your name?
Oh, John Waschkevitz, John Paul.
Which Waschkevitz clan?
Okay. Go ahead, it's funny. So we figured it out, John.
Going back to what Jim was saying, we also are happy to learn from anyone else. Everyone's pretty much in the same boat. Except that every, the other communities are talking about their retail facilities. We have hardly said a word about retail facilities. We've just all been on grow, uh, grow sites. But the fact is that there is very little legally grown marijuana in Massachusetts right now. Nobody, if we're, every community that is putting these bylaws together is doing it sort of in the blind. Because we really don't know what some of the practical applications are going to be. East Hampton has had a bylaw for probably up close to a year now, but they're just getting their first retail. I don't know if they have any growing going on over there. Where, Whately, you said?
Deerfield. Deerfield and Whately both, this week.
So they have bylaws in place, but they don't have any experience in what that's going to, uh, what that's going to produce yet. As these places get experience, we'll all be talking. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission meets as a body every three months. And all of the plant, representatives of all the planning departments from all of the member communities get together for dinner and a topic of some sort. This is something we're going to be actively, you know, we're going to stay engaged with this going forward. But we just have to, we just have to get something, put a stake in the ground. That we have a reference point and we go up or down from there.
It, certainly personalities do make a difference. In Deerfield, the hearing that I went to, the gentleman raises a lot of flowers. He happens to be Dutch and he's highly respected in the community. And his presentation was a little different than the presentation that you all had in the Public Safety Building, where people were not happy with the individual presenting it, because there was a history involved with the greenhouse. So personalities do make a difference, too.
The, I mean, I would love to take a, I would love to take a field trip to visit some of these grow facilities. But, you know, you're talking California, Oregon, Ontario is probably the closest one. And I have no desire to, I mean, I, I would take a trip to Ontario. I would mind, I would not hesitate to take a road trip to Ontario. However, this time of year, no way.
Yeah, you got to go to the snow belt.
I mean, I've been, I've been to Ontario, it's a great, it's a wonderful area of Canada. But in, you know, this time of year, by the time I, by the time I do get there, this bylaw is going to have to already be submitted and, you know, go into town meeting, so it's going to be too late. I wish I knew about this guy, this person six months ago, it would have been a different story, you know? Drive a, you know, halfway up there, go see him, whatever, upset.
Well, some of us met last weekend and, so I can't speak for all of Hadley, but for those of us that met are, you know, really happy with, you know, what you guys are putting together and, you know, we want something we can support. I think, you know, from what we've seen and looked over, it looks pretty darned close. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a sense that's a lot of people looking at the work that's been done and saying, it's not good enough and we can't support, does it? It's, it's the little details and I think we all are pretty happy with it. Well, happy to be unhappy.
Go, go, go to town meeting in May and vote for it.
I think we will.
Because that is, that is the biggest thing about this, of, you know, everybody says, yeah, we like this, we can live with it, everything else. And you don't ship a town meeting and vote for it, you know? And that, that's the important thing. You know, go to town meeting and make your voice heard. For or against?
The other, the other option is to reverse the original vote in Hadley.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a tattered amount of project, because you're going to take a town meeting vote and a ballot vote and you need, uh, well, you only, you need a majority at each. But, you know, that's petitions and a whole bit and.
What percentage did it win by in Hadley?
Well, in the state, fifty-two percent, that was close.
I don't know what was that, anybody in there?
Well, I would be willing to bet that if people knew what their vote meant.
Yeah.
At the ballot, the vote tally would have been different. However, it is what it is and we passed it, be it by three votes or one vote or a thousand votes. It passed in Hadley, it's what we have to live with and we need to address it.
Yeah, I think Lisa Sanderson had said it was something, it wasn't, it was close, it was like fifty-two to forty-eight or something like that.
Yeah.
But even if there were a, an organized opposition to allowing adult use, growth and sales in Hadley, that was going to be on the ballot for, or on the warrant for town meeting, we still have to have this ready to go in case that didn't go.
Yeah.
So.
It's to reverse any point of view.
Yeah. So.
It's like prohibition.
So, I don't know if you want to go through any of the other comments. Uh, I shared this with Dick Evans, who's a lawyer in Northampton, who is very, an advocate for legalization of marijuana across the board, but he also is a good land use lawyer that I've worked with. He came back with a number of comments.
I couldn't get that to print out with his comments. When I tried to print it out with the comments, I printed it out with everybody's comments and it was an absolute disaster.
Okay.
So I'm doing, I'm not doing something wrong.
I'll give you that, be a guru. The, some of the comments, some of these are kind of technical and they're based, they're, they're actually very helpful based on, some of the ins and outs of the Cannabis Control Commission requirements. So some of what we are asking for, you said a couple of them, create a catch twenty-two where we're saying you have to have Cannabis Control Commission approval before you can apply. And Cannabis Control Commission says you have to have local, local approval before you can be approved. So I will share this with Jim, I think some of these should be able to be worked in, but there.
Quite a bit of stuff. So, yeah, I, I was ready, some of, I didn't able to read them because of the way there were, the way the, the spreadsheet was put together. But when I tried to print them, I don't know if I, it didn't print, upset. So, and I, I saw the catch twenty-two, so I was like, you know, he's got some, like Bill says, he's got some good points. There's a lot of, there's a few comments in here that I disagree with, but a lot of, some of the wording and stuff like that, that, yeah, it makes sense to do that.
And there, particularly, he made a, a good point with the way we have it worded, that there'll be only two facilities. We meant that to mean there will only be two retail facilities. But because of how we define facilities, everything is incorporated. A grow site is a facility. So that's something we'll have to.
Right.
Address.
The only thing about that is the town has already voted on the two limit. And that specifically, specifically addresses retail sites.
Right.
But we need to make it better in our bylaws to avoid that of conflicting comments between the town, what they voted, what we have.
So I'll give you mine too, because I've put some check marks, the, some of the things I thought were.
Okay.
More valid than, than some of the worst opinion, okay?
Except this is in color.
So again, nothing substantive in those. I think Jim will be able to work them into the next draft, which will go out. But I'll give some useful points on just consistency between the bylaw, the state regulations, and internal consistency of the bylaw.
The bigger thing is to add, you know, from what we talked about a little bit on the noise, to add a, a, a section under the area where we have, you know, smells and odors that would dress noise, because it'll be a disaster. I mean, noise, on a hot summer day, you could probably be a hundred feet from the facility and not hear a noise. And a cold winter day like we have today, you could be a half a mile away and that noise could be extremely irritating because of the way sound travels in, in hot humid weather versus clear, clear, crisp cold weather. And so. Like you said, the one thing about noise is it's very measurable.
And then there was this comment.
Oh, we got one from.
Attorney.
The attorney.
Right.
On.
Close to a subdivision.
I don't know if this is even legal, Bill, that's what I was going to ask you. Do you have any idea if that's legal? We got a comment that we're allowing, we're allowing craft growers, which is a five thousand square foot facility on a site. And one of the comments that we mentioned at one of our meetings was, well, what if somebody comes along and takes a ten acre parcel and now divides, subdivides it into a bunch of small parcels and now you have a whole bunch of craft marijuana growers? So we tried to address it by saying craft marijuana growers have to be three hundred feet away from each other. That'll address it to some point, but what we'd really like to do is, you know, put something in there that says, you can't do, you can't subdivide it. And an attorney has given us a comment that we would not allow a property to be subdivided. But here it is. No marijuana cultivator, regardless of tier, shall be permitted to modify, alter, or amend, or divide, or subdivide any parcel of length for the purpose of cultivating marijuana. That's a great thing and it would, would work. What I don't know is it legal.
I, I don't know, that might be something we'll have to run by town.
That might be illegal to simply, oh, because you're limiting how somebody can divide their property, that might not be legal. I hope it is, that would take care of a lot of our concerns.
I, I'm just concerned that if you could, if you can legally subdivide it for other purposes, we may be boxing ourselves into a corner by saying, you can do it for any other purpose except for this. I think that the, um, the setbacks would still apply. So I think that addresses, gets to some of it. We might need to think about that a little bit, or maybe I will just share it with Town Council.
Yes, ma'am.
The other potential issue with that is though that you're saying, if you went with this, as it is, that no marijuana cultivator, whatever, can subdivide, but an owner could subdivide and then sell to lots of different.
Yeah.
Growers or whatever. So whether you would need to say, as of the passing of this bylaw, no parcel can be subdivided.
Yeah, that, that you could do, because now, now somebody couldn't come along and subdivide it.
Well, for the.
It, it gets into a, you're right. It's a, it's a very messy, complicated situation. And although the intent sounds good, like Joe commented many, many times, the devil's in the details, there's ways, I would be sure, that could be worked around this. And I think what we really need to do is go back to the setbacks between, the setback distances between craft marijuana growers. And maybe we make that something larger than three hundred feet. You know, we've got to look at that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I, Attorney Andrew Bass, I wrote that one. Yeah, after the last meeting, we looked at a few parcels with a surveyor, just some maps. And it looked like it's entirely possible, it's under the current rules in Hadley, to subdivide some of these things. And you could have like fifty grow houses on a tier one cultivator on some of these lots in Hadley. And it's completely legal. I mean, there's nothing that the bylaw covers about it, and there's nothing the town regulations cover about it. And if the requirements to subdivide them are so liberal, then you could, you know, you could easily do it. So, you know, I don't think that what I drafted is perfect by any means, but if there was something that could be structured, you know, then that would probably be essential to include in there, otherwise in that AgRes district, for example, this could happen, where you could have fifty of these things on one, what was one parcel.
We fully realize that, and that's what we're trying to do, we're wrestling with, how do we do that? And to, without trying to box ourselves in and also not be legal, but also, we want to be legal, we have to be legal, we have a choice. And we also don't want to limit the options of the farmer for future things. I don't know, yes, sir?
I'd like to say that the, as far as I know, the, the laws stated, state that you can only hold three licenses for cultivation. So if there was a property that was divided into fifty different parcels, you could still only own three licenses.
We realize that, but we're saying that they could sell it off to other, you know, they could sell it off to other people so that you would still have three, anybody who still only owned three. But you would probably have, to his point, in the worst case scenario, fifteen different groups of three owning all those pieces, okay? Now, you know, that's probably really stretching the whole theory and I doubt that would happen. However, you may not have fifty, but maybe you have fifteen, where you normally really only want to have two or three. Okay?
Okay. On the other hand, if you're going to do a by right division of the land, you have to have it at least be a building lot size. So you're talking 175 feet of frontage and 30,000 square feet of area. So there are parcels that could be broken up that are that big, but it's not like you're going to take a 10 acre parcel and cut it up 10 ways if you don't have the street frontage to support that.
It's got to meet the zoning bylaw and a lot of it will depend on how lucrative is the marijuana grow business. I mean, if it's, if it's extremely lucrative, then people could get really, really creative on how to divide their properties up. If it is, you know, reasonably lucrative and, you know, they're not going to start dividing the properties up, you know, who knows? We can't predict that. This is just, you know, out there someplace, but we're trying to at least prevent or not prevent, avoid the real easy ones to be divided where they have enough frontage on a row, something like that.
Could one withdraw a subdivision plan and instead convert it to marijuana grow business?
They could draw up a subdivision plan for building lots and convert that entirely into, oh, wait a minute. No, they can't. They, no, they can't. No, they can't. Because of the wording that was put in by Mr. Attorney Bass on subdivision. If you have a definitive subdivision approved in a residential area, those are residential building lots. Therefore, those residential building lots could not be turned into grow processed parcels because the sub, because the bylaw says that you need to be away 300, if we change it to three, I'm breaking up. Any approved definitive subdivision and that that is on file with the registry of deeds, so they couldn't, they couldn't break it up into residential lots.
All we're thinking about is North Hadley. What about Lawrence Plain and that street that's been put in and nobody's never sold a lot there?
They could not, that is an approved subdivision that is on file in the registry of deeds and that cannot be converted into built, into grow lots.
Sort of a catch 22 on setbacks.
Yes.
What if somebody bought five of those lots?
I would, I would, I would say that we're all set on this.
You know, I suppose.
We're almost all set.
Theoretically, someone could come into us with a non-residential subdivision in a business district or the industrial district and put, they asked to put it in a street and with, say hypothetically, 10 lots off of it. However, we have, under the subdivision regulations, we have, we can impose the requirements of a commercial street, of a business street.
That street is going to cost $500 a foot.
The, the, I mean, I, the only thing we would need to be concerned with is a very long approval not required building lots. And by long, I mean something that meets frontage, but is very deep to divide them up. Those exist, I'm not going to deny it. There's a few places in Hadley that those would be allowed. South Maple Street is one that comes to mind. There's a lot of open fields out there that has a lot of frontage and the lots, the Wests and the Cooks have very deep lots.
APR.
That's true, there's APR out there too. But there's, there's not, I don't think the concern is as big as we think about because the first wording that Mr. Attorney, like I said, Attorney Bass recommended, and where we've already incorporated it, about setbacks with approved definitive subdivision. If it's, if it's already been done, then somebody can't come in, in the ag residential district and say, well, we're going to divide this into, you know, 20 building lots, good 300 feet back from each of them. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I think having drafted that, I might caution on that because that's, it only applies to things on record, right, at the time of the bylaw enactment? So if they come in afterwards and then divided, they can still try it. That only applies to something on record already that's already been divided.
But we change it.
I think we could change it.
That's easy enough to change to on record to simply.
At the time of application, so.
Yeah, you can do that. I did have one other question that I'm probably done for the night, but did Richard Evans address setbacks at all in his pointers of things that he found to be catch 22s or anything?
Not, not per se. He had some more general comments about how, why are you having such big setbacks? But that, I put that aside as sort of commentary as opposed to pointing out some real catch 22s and internal inconsistency.
So we seem to.
I'll try to remember to send you what he, his comments, so you can take a look at them.
Okay. So are we going to hold one more hearing like this before we have a definitive work done or?
Yeah, I think we want to, I think we want to make the changes that we were talking about, they're not great.
Okay.
And we need to get this to town council, not town council.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can start sending it to Joel, to town council.
We can send town council, I'm talking about, we need to get to, screw it, I think, we need to get placeholders to David Nixon by the 13th, how many zoning bylaws we're going to have. And, I mean, we, sometimes we've given him the zone bylaw a month before town meetings, this could be published in the warrant. So we've got some time to actually get the finished product to David.
I would think maybe after you get your next draft.
Want to give it to Joel.
Want to give it to Joel to take a look at.
Yes.
Joel Bard, our town council. I did speak with, or emailed with our new Pioneer Valley Planning Commission representative. He actually asked if, we wanted him to come tonight. I said I didn't think that would be necessary. So functionally, we try to break up our, our month by using the first Tuesday of the month for planning activities and the third Tuesday of the month for the permitting side of things. Which, so tonight was kind of a hybrid because there was no first Tuesday of January. He will be able to join us on February 5th.
Okay.
I did ask him to be up, as much up to speed as he could be on MS4.
Yeah.
Which is a massive anti-pollution drainage control initiative that the state thinks all the towns along the Connecticut River should jump in on. So we're under pressure to have another area of bylaws developed for Springtown meeting. I think we can probably bring this up on February 5th as well, but.
Well, right now, the 19th, I always go to the fire station. I honestly don't think that's going to be a monster type concern. I bet we could probably take that up and, I doubt that'll take more than about 45 minutes.
Yeah.
You know, it's simply a whole lot more clearer because they don't have a parking problem, they don't have a drainage problem. We'll raise some concerns about, ask questions about the drainage, but if they're, if they design it for at least a 25 year storm, no. They should be good, if even tested. Usually, they design for 100 year storm.
Once again though, Jim, this, this bothers me. You have this huge parcel of land that the town bought and you're going to have this little auxiliary fire station plumped right in the middle with no plan for overall drainage, all this.
That's not a zoning issue.
I mean, that's not a zoning issue, but it is an issue that I'm going to address.
All right.
Because there is no plan. They've got a building committee that.
We have a scheduling issue right now.
Yep.
Got to get through that. I don't mind taking this up on, I don't mind taking adult marijuana up on the 5th as well, along with MS4.
Yeah, MS4 is not going to be a core.
That is, MS4 will be a, would be a large technical block of stuff, but it's basically stuff we're being told we have to do anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's, you're right, that's a lot, that's very clear cut because the state says you have to do this.
We just.
It's not negotiable.
Yeah, we just want to be sure that we have something ready to go, so we need to review that for more.
I agree.
But we can do this on the, on the 5th as well. And this, January's a five Tuesday month, so that's actually three weeks away.
Did the legislature vote that we had to do this or was it?
It's already, it's already DEP.
It was, it was a dictate, it was a dictate.
It's a dictator. Yeah. And it's already being utilized by the state, the state is already, how would I say this? Made MS4 effective as of, I think, late last year.
So you had no say about this?
Yes.
A bureaucrat told you how to do this. This is called taxation without representation, okay?
That's, that's, yeah. It's very similar to what they're trying to do with, I think, I wouldn't be a bit surprised if this flood plain is tied to MS4 somehow, Joe.
I would, I think you're absolutely correct. Well, just for the audience, the flood plain is being adjusted and you may even be in the flood plain, but what they want to do is expand the flood plain so they can get more people paying into the federal flood insurance program. It's a, it's a subtle way, he's shaking his head knowing, because they're running out of money or they don't have enough money to fund, so that's a whole other story. Before, before we close it up, these people may be interested in what I was going to be commenting about.
Okay, let me talk to you for a minute about the flood thing. Just as a little bit further information on that, Joe and I attended, and several others in town, David Nixon among them, a seminar, a public information system. One was at the Jones Library, at the tunnel of Jones Library, there was two others around Springfield, holy God, I forgot where they were. And right now, the flood plain maps are basically 1950s, 60s vintage paper maps. And they want to put, update the flood plain maps and digitize them. Well, that's great. However, because they have preliminary taken the paper maps and overlayed the new proposed flood planes on them, that I have no idea where they got these information from. And they've done it town by town, virtually along with the Connecticut River and in other areas of the state, wherever there is a river, a little flood, which is obviously is practically every city or town within the state because of the number of rivers. The Connecticut River is a big one and it affects us and every other town right near us. Currently, and I know this from when we were building and designing the new elementary school, or the elementary school, I said, I knew it's just 20 something years old now. We took elevations, Randy Isner and I, Randy's the engineer, I would just hold the stick, and we took a whole bunch of elevations around Hopkins. And the only areas around Hopkins that were within the flood zone, which is 125 foot level at that section of town, is the ball fields at Russell School, the Hopkins ball fields, but virtually the entire parking lot and where the old gym was are not in the flood plain. Hopkins is not in the flood plain and nothing here is in the flood plain. It's all above 125. The banks are not in the flood plain. The new flood plain maps show all of this in the flood plain. Hopkins, Hopkins is raised up, good Lord, 10 feet above the flood plain. And likewise, all of the, you know, the Holy Redeemer Church and all the, all the areas around and, and they, they, in the center of town, much of this is in the flood plain. You go out to where a lot of you live, not so much on Shattuck Road, but in Cold Springs Lane, you're barely out of the flood plain. So you can just imagine how much area has been added there. And you go up along 116 where Meadow Street is and Meadow Street and Roosevelt Street and not Meadow Street, Meadow Street and Amherst, Roosevelt Street and Hadley and stuff like that, that's almost all in the flood plain now. And all the fields out towards 116. My mother grew up in that area. She said, that didn't even flood until 36. So we're working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and we notified, we told the state at our meeting, you know, this is wrong. Well, they don't disagree with that. They says, well, we've got to somehow research this and find out what's really correct. Well, how do we do that? They didn't have a good answer. So working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, you know, obviously surveying the town is not a reasonable thing, but how do we address this? And so luckily, this is not something that's going to be done any, right now. This is a five year plan at the earliest that we need to get this, get this addressed. So we have some time, but we can't do nothing and wait for four years and say, oh, we now have to do something. So we're trying to get going on if now even realize it's probably going to take a considerable amount of research. Okay, go ahead, Bill. Go, Joe, with your.
Okay. I'm the representative from the planning board to the CPA, Community Preservation Act. And we presented to us last night was the request for the APR for the Shala property, which is parked beyond Shattuck Road all the way. So that's a, it's 170 acres off Cummins Road and Shattuck Road. And the projected cost is $720,000. APR is going to be funding, the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture will fund half, $360,000. The only reason they don't have a federal matching yet, so that's why they are only contributing half. Now, the other 50% is coming from the CPA, the Community Preservation Act, which we'll have a chance to vote on it at the town meeting. But the, the most important part from the planning board perspective is TDR, the Transfer Development Rights. A few years ago, the planning board said that if you do not have enough parking in the business zone, you can buy your way out. Maybe extortion, but nevertheless, you can put some money aside for exactly a situation like this, buying more agricultural land. And the custodian of this money is the Conservation Commission, so they're the ones that are going to be requesting it. But with this parcel, the percentage will be 21% or 150,000 from the TDR that was set aside. So kind of good news for something that we occasionally stumble into the right direction.
Okay, so we'll continue this marijuana discussion to February 5th and, okay, hopefully we'll have just about finalized by then. Let's see, other business. We did get a letter. There is a building lot on Lawrence Plain Road that was recently, under contract to be sold, and there was a bulldozer out there, what, a week ago, Mike, week and a half ago, moving, moving the topsoil around, and they since brought in a significant amount of fill. And that's the one next to the flag lot, just down the road from the spice plant, you know what I'm talking about? The one that put the flag lot in, it was way back and the road was flooding by David Chumore's house there.
Yep.
But to the, just to the north of where, across the street from where Mike Kostic used to live.
Mm-hmm.
We have a letter from two neighbors. David and Rebecca Chumore to the planning board, and it's dated today. We are concerned with the amount of fill being brought in for the lot, for the lot next to us. We have had problems with water flooding part of our land in the past when a flag lot was put in. We have notified, we notified the planning board then. We would like it noted that it is a concern for us now. David called me today about this and I told him that, you know, really the planning board can't do, has no say on an approval not required lot if they're filling something in. That's really an issue between landowners, if there was a flooding occurring, unless there's a conservation issue at the current time. And he's, well, I doubt there's a conservation issue because there's really no wetlands near them or anything like that. And he's, he just making this letter to us basically just for the record so that somebody's been alerted that there's a concern. I think it's more of a kind of C Y. I think it's more of a kind of CYA and kegs down the road if something happens. So, I'm going to make a copy of this and put it into the building inspector's mailbox and the Conservation Commission. There's really nothing else from, it's a private landowner, it's an approval not required lot, the right, the part of the filling is right up against the road going out to the flag lot that had some concerns when they put it in a couple, several years ago. So, I says that we're very limited of what we can do. Oh, town report, I put that out for review. Anybody have any comments on it?
Good job. That's fine.
I didn't read it either.
I read it, I read it.
Oh, we did get our annual acknowledgement of a summary of the Conflict of Interest Law. Did you guys fill it out and mail it and put it into the town's clerk's mailbox?
No.
No? You want to sign it, it says you've got a copy?
Don't you have to do the ethics thing every two years, though?
Year or every year or every two years?
Every two years.
Yeah, I think I just did it last year.
Yeah, just, yeah, we can sign, I'll put it in her mailbox, and we'll be covered. I put mine in today, I sent it to the select, the thing is same old, same old, but... And we have no bills. Do you have anything else, Bill?
I don't have anything else.
Move we adjourn.
Wait, let's finish this first.
Second. Probably it's a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission calendar in there.
Yeah.
Is that the best?
Yeah. Oh. Nice. Okay. Anyone a calendar? Okay, we motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Meetings, history, thank you, and thank you, John.